Okay, we're ready. Thanks.
Thanks. Item number 20, reconvene to open session. The committee has reconvened to the open session. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the May 22, 2025, AFA Committee Executive Session as a closed record?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Bennett, will you poll the committee?
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the internal audit charter as presented and forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Bennett, will you poll the committee?
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the draft casualty and workers' compensation claim contract audit report as presented and forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for approval?
No move.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Bennett, will you poll the committee?
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 21, adjournment. If there is no further business, do I have a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're ready to begin the ops portion.
Well, good morning, everyone, and I'll follow Commissioner Jennings' lead. Happy Friday Eve. That's a good. So I'll call to order the Operations Committee meeting for today, Thursday, August 14, 2025. Ms. Bennett, please call the roll.
Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Cox? Commissioner Galladay?
Here.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Present.
Commissioner Beach?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Gladney? You can proceed.
Thank you. Item four, approval of minutes of the May 22, 2025 Operations Committee Open Meeting. The minutes were provided to you in your packet for review. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passed. Item five, contract award, marketing and strategic planning services. I'll ask Tom Curran and Kevin Scott for comments on this matter, please.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'll take the lead on the comments this morning relative to this agenda item.
Good. I'm anxious to hear them.
Okay. Okay. So again, good morning, Commissioners. So today I'm here in my Public Affairs and Communications capacity.
You're breaking up. You're breaking up. I don't, for me, you are. I don't know about anyone else. Is...
Yeah, he was kind of skipping there.
Yeah, it's kind of sketchy.
How about now?
Well, talk a little more. Let's, let's see where it goes.
So again, how do I sound at this juncture?
You're good now.
You're good.
Okay. I apologize about, apologize for that. So again, today I'm here in my Public Affairs and Communications capacity to present to this committee for consideration a request authorizing our president and CEO to award a contract for marketing and media strategic planning services for a five-year period. It's actually a three-base year, two-option year contract. This current contract has been in place for a decade, and option year two of the current contract is expiring on October the 11th, 2025. The vendor currently holding this, this agreement is Wehrmeyer Creative. This type of support service relationship, again, has been in place for a long time and has been used to support overall media production projects for ByState Development. As you're aware, in May of this year, Mr. Roach completed a realignment of the legacy marketing and communication structure here at ByState. This focus on internal efficiencies realized the overall budget reduction of 17 internal positions, placing expanded dependency on our contractors, who bring significant experience and creativity to ByState, to the ByState Development brand. The contractors are utilized on an as-needed basis with projects, communications, and productions at the discretion of the newly appointed Director of Public Affairs. Our continued vision is for sustained proactive engagement to ensure a continual flow of brand communication. We continue to employ enhanced operational efficiencies, prioritizing a very small multitasking internal public affairs team, which is beginning to display clear proactive, atypical creative communication tactics, which is paying dividends for the organization already. My vision in my new public affairs role has, has been, since its inception, a small, flexible, lightweight internal team, complemented by external contract support on an as-needed basis to truly professionalize our communications production and community engagement coordination. Knowing this, I'd like to provide background relative to the current agenda item. On April 8, 2025, prior to my promotion to this position and the implementation of the new public affairs team, ByState Development issued a solicitation for marketing and media strategic planning services to retain a qualified firm to provide said services for continued support to ByState Development's then-marketing and communications group, impacting Metro Transit, St. Louis Downtown Airport, and the St. Louis Regional Freightway. Again, the solicitation was implemented because the current agreement is expiring. As a disadvantaged business enterprise goal was not recommended for this project, the contract period performance includes three base years and two option years under the recommendation. In response to the solicitation, four proposals were received, reviewed, and forwarded to an evaluation team, which consisted of individuals representing Metro Transit, the St. Louis Regional Freightway, the St. Louis Downtown Airport, and ByState's Development, now Public Affairs Division. The submitting, participating, marketing firms in this solicitation were Fuse, Osborne and Bar Communications, Two Times Four LLC, and Wehrmeyer Creative. The proposals were scored in accordance with the evaluation requirements specified in the solicitation package. Upon completion of the individual scoring, the cost proposals were reviewed and evaluated. You have been provided in your packet the overall results representing cost and consensus technical scores combined. As a result, Wehrmeyer Creative was, again, the highest-ranking firm with a combined score of 419.09. On July the 2nd, 2025, ByState Development's procurement officer assigned to this solicitation requested the best and final cost from Wehrmeyer Creative, resulting in a contract cost over five years of $2,397,500. Please note that this is a approximate 270, I'm sorry, $269,000 increase over the expiring five-year agreement with Wehrmeyer Creative, approved not to exceed $2,128,500. The procurement process deemed Wehrmeyer's cost as fair and reasonable in comparison with others that submitted proposals, and Wehrmeyer has developed exceptional, professional, and performed exceptional and professional services for ByState Development over the years. Management is requesting your approval of this agreement with referral to the full Board of Commissioners, authorizing the president and CEO to enter into said agreement. This contract is 100% funded through our operating budget. So with that, I know there's going to be some questions relative to this proposal, so I'll be happy to answer those questions and explain why we are presenting this.
I guess maybe we'll start with the need for these services, given our past actions with other firms, and anyone else who has anything additional to add that you could respond to?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thanks for that report and that proposal, Kevin. I dug into this quite lengthy yesterday for several hours, and after reviewing it, a couple of questions. We, refresh my memory, didn't we just enter into an agreement not too long ago with the Hauser firm for some similar work as what we're talking here?
That's correct. Please remember, though, when these solicitations are constructed, there are different scopes of work. And so relative to the Hauser Group, that is a consulting media relations agreement. That is long-term messaging and planning, support with press releases, and overall media communication. This, that is a very small contract. This is about half the size of this solicitation. That's a $1.3 million contract over five years with limited use throughout the year, discretionary use throughout the year. In this particular agreement, this is a, this is a 3,300-hour-a-week agreement that is focused on the actual technical production of videos and communications and overall advertisement efforts that we, we still will need to make here at ByState Development. Obviously, we have a profound emphasis now on internal, or on external communications relative to overall safety, the system being clean and safe. But there are, there are, there are certainly necessities that we need to continue to pursue relative to our overall creativity and attraction to this regional brand, and that is really where the difference in those contracts exist.
So, so I've been seeing some of the proactive work in the commercials that's being done. Who's been putting that together? Is that the Hauser Group, or who is doing that?
So...
You're, you're breaking up.
Can't hear you.
Good.
How about now?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Any, any of the, the media content, the actual production and/or filming is done by Wehrmeyer. So that, they, they are a media production company. The Hauser Group and that, that agreement really has profoundly impacted multimodal. So there's a heavy presence of the Hauser Group's work within the Regional Freightway efforts, and so the, the majority of the outgoing media production is coordinated by Wehrmeyer.
Okay, so the $64,000 question I had, is there any duplication of services in reference to both of these contracts?
Well, again, the scopes, the scopes are different, Commissioner. So I would say that could, could, could Hauser do some of the things that Wehrmeyer does, possibly, but that would necessitate an expanded scope of that agreement. We, we've never used Hauser for the types of things that the Wehrmeyer contract is in place for. And again, with the, with the reduction of the internal staff in the effort to create a more lightweight, flexible group, these relate, these external relationships become, become extremely important for the professional creative, creativity that we need to push out to represent the brand. So that, that really is the big difference.
Okay. Well, and I appreciate that. You know, I'm just, when I hear that revenues are down and when we're looking at this kind of money and we just issued a contract, I would, I would rather see us go back to the drawing board with Hauser and find out what they are capable of doing under their existing contract. So I am not in all favor of this kind of money over the next five years. That's just my opinion.
If, if I can add, Hauser was not asked to perform this type of service at the time because things were different. So I don't know that we know that they do or do not have the capacity to do this work. My perception would be that they do have the capacity to do this work, and it could potentially be at a lower amount than what we are currently facing in the item that is on the agenda today.
If, if I may, Commissioners, it is true. Part of this is a bit of a, we have some difficulty in timing. Kevin, and it's a little unfair, Kevin is a little bit on his back foot. I, I feel that that's a little bit unfair. I've put him in that position because really, on the primacy of what we want to do organizationally, is start from a personnel standpoint, and of course, then the timing came up then, that we're doing these contracts right away. So I do think, and that, that simply has to do with where the calendar is. But I think that the Commissioners make some very legitimate points about what are, what are the primacy of these important contracts and whether they are fulfilling the need within essentially Mr. Scott's vision, along with mine, of what a new security and public affairs team is. But I will say, part of our response, even the reorganization of the team, is that this, you as a Board of Commissioners have pushed us to be more proactive in the messaging. So we need the tools to do that, right? I think it's totally fair, however, to, to ask, are these tools the best? Have they been set up the best way? I think it's reasonable for us to take a look at that. We rely on you as Commissioners to give us insight on things sometimes that we don't see, and I appreciate that. And, and we can certainly take a look at this contract. I would say that we probably would need to solicit and, and bid more to be sure that we were being competitive if we were to expand the Hauser contract. That would be the rules within our procurement. But we could take a look at that, along with the, the comments that you all have made today, and, and move from there. We don't always have to, I, I do prefer 100% of, of your votes, but I'm not always going to get that, and that's okay with us. We're, we're professionals. I have a lot of confidence in Kevin's vision for communications. I just want to provide him with as many tools as I, as I can. So that's, that's the conclusion of my comment. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Simmons, where you're about to say second.
No, I was just, if you're going to call for a vote, I want to make the motion of what we're going to do here.
Yeah, I, I, from the comments we just heard from Mr. Roach, I think we are pulling this item back, potentially, and revisiting it at a later date, once given an opportunity to possibly pursue a conversation or an opportunity of bidding or expanded relationship with a group we just entered into a substantial contract with. Is that what I heard correctly, Mr. Roach?
I don't, I don't know if that's what I, I want to hear. I mean, I'm, I'm, if we just pull it back and we put it on the table, that means it comes back up again. And I'm not at all for duplicating services without us even having revisited with Hauser Group. I got to believe, I'd be very, very shocked if what I'm hearing from Mr. Scott and from Mr. Roach, the amount of work that we're talking about doing, that it takes two firms, that somehow or other we should be able to combine them. So I, I think if you pull it back, it's still open up for a future, I mean, if they're going to go out and talk with the Hauser Group to find out if they can handle some of this work on a per need basis, I just don't know how much step-per-need basis we're paying, and we're going to get $2.3 billion with the service.
And, and I would simply add, Commissioner Simmons is right. If, if we tabled it, I can't change the terms of the existing bids, right? So that would skew from a procurement standpoint. We really would have to kind of go back, and, and so it might make sense to go ahead and take a vote on this, Madam Chair, and even if it is, then, and it does not pass, and then, and then we can reconfigure and reassess from that standpoint. It doesn't, in other words, it does not make sense for us to table because I, I would not be able to change the terms of the existing legally. So...
Good, okay.
I hope I answered that.
All right, all right. It's, it's a lot of talk, so I just want to make sure we get it right.
Yes, ma'am.
Why don't we go forward then? I'll entertain a motion and second to approve this item as presented.
I make a motion not to approve?
Second.
I believe that the motion has to be in the affirmative.
Would agree?
Yes.
If you defeat the motion, you have to move to approve and defeat it.
Move to...
I'm sorry. So what do you say?
I would suggest you motion to approve it and vote in the negative. You move in the affirmative and vote in the negative.
I make the motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the second is to approve it, but it's going to be removed, correct?
Then you just vote whether or not you want to approve. Yes or no?
How you vote, right?
Yes, you can just vote no.
Right.
So a no vote is mean that we're not, we're not voting?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I vote no.
No, we, we haven't called for the vote yet.
Ms. Bennett will call the roll.
Yeah, wait a minute.
I made a motion to approve it. I assume it's okay for me to vote no, even though I made a motion to approve it.
Yes.
That's correct.
It is.
This, this is, this'll be the first for me in about 40 years, but the whole thing here has gotten me a little bit confused, but I understand. I think, I think we need to look at it some more. I concur with that. So I make a motion, my motion is to approve it.
And her, was, the second one, I think, was from Commissioner Jennings, was that correct? And now we will call for a, well, as opposed to the...
Roll call, please.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Beach?
No.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Simmons?
No.
Commissioner Galladay?
No.
And Commissioner Moore?
No.
The motion did not pass.
Motion does not pass, and we will move forward to item six. Sorry for that confusion. Contract award, bus fare box replacement. I will ask Tom Curran for comments.
Thank you. This is a request for authorization to enter into a contract with Gen Fair LLC for replacement of Metro Bus, Metro's bus fare boxes. On December 27, 2024, ByState issued a solicitation for complete replacement of its bus fare box system. This is the final project in Metro's fare collection program to renovate its passenger revenue equipment. The request for proposals includes replacement of 420 electronic fare boxes, three garage data management systems and workstations for our three bus garages, 16 garage vaulting systems, 40 mobile vaults, 50 spare cash boxes, 25 key sets, four electronic keys for offline probing of fare boxes, and one fare box maintenance test system. Four proposals were received in response to the RFP, and they were evaluated by a committee consisting of representatives from our passenger revenue and information technology departments. Based on a combination of technical and cost scores as shown in the briefing paper, Gen Fair had the highest-ranked proposal. The last time ByState replaced its bus fare boxes was through a solicitation in 2010, 2010, when a contract in the amount of $13.7 billion was awarded to Scheit and Bachmann USA. It should be noted that there were 482 buses in Metro's fleet at the time of the prior contract compared to 380 buses at the time of the RFP issuance this time. So management is recommending that the Operations Committee accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners this request for approval of a 12-year contract with Gen Fair LLC for replacement of all Metro Bus fare boxes and associated equipment, plus 12 years of software, back office, and equipment maintenance, and the not-to-exceed amount of $13,127,094.52. Funding is being provided through federal grants, plus the local matching funds, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curran?
Tom, refresh my memory was, did we have an issue a while, a long time back with these fare boxes, or what was that? Or refresh my memory, were there some of them didn't get installed, or was that these boxes, or was that something else?
I'm not aware that any fare boxes were not installed. I know that Scheit and Bachmann has been a provider again since 2010. There was some issues with an upgrade to the Scheit and Bachmann system called FareGo that ultimately we decided was not worth pursuing because it took Scheit and Bachmann so long to get to the point where that product was going to go live, and it never did successfully. That by then, you know, the period of time had passed, and it was time to get new fare boxes because the Scheit and Bachmann fare boxes that we have now are at the end of their useful life. It's been 15 years. So you're correct that there was problems with that upgrade, but this new contract is being recommended for a different company.
Right, because my understanding was is there was some issue with that that was costly to us, and it never did get straightened out. So I'm glad to see that we are not chasing that rabbit hole yet.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion and second to approve this item as presented by Mr. Curran.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or any abstentions? The motion passes. Item seven, unscheduled business. Mr. Roach, is there any unscheduled business?
Madam Chair, I have no unscheduled business. We can go on to Mr. Forrest's operations report.
Okay, Mr. Forrest, hello. Nice to meet you virtually, and I will ask for your comments, please. We, we cannot hear you. We cannot hear you, Mr. Forrest. Or I cannot hear you. I don't know.
No.
Can you all hear me now?
Now we can.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry. Some technical difficulties. Okay, so let me start. First, I want to say good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I do want to say that we are laying the groundwork necessary to get to where we want to be as a public transit provider because we know that there is always room for improvement. So I want to start out by saying that. because we know that there is always room for improvement. So I want to start out by saying that. However, we are getting healthier. On the bus operation side, we currently have 643 of our budgeted number of 651. We had a hiring event last month. We extended 43 bus operator offers to applicants. And out of those 43, we're looking to start a class of 20 on this Monday, on the 18th. The MetroLink side is, is healthy. They have 91 of 95 budgeted operators, so they're looking really good. On the Call-A-Ride side, they have 191 operators and a class, a class of four currently. Now, the ideal number for Call-A-Ride is around 200 plus operators, a little over 200, 201, 202. However, they're still consistently making their scheduled trips. They're averaging slightly over 1,600 scheduled trips per day. But on some days, that number spikes to 1,900. And that's when the team starts to implement some really creative approaches to meeting that increased demand. It's no easy feat, takes some very busy work, but they're very good at it. Those creative approaches include outsourcing some of those trips to VIA, which is our micro transit provider, and to our Lyft concierge service. Now, obviously, the use of both of those, especially Lyft, is not what we want to do, I have to do to sustain operations. Therefore, we're looking at adding some more part-time operators to our Call-A-Ride workforce. We're also looking to do the same to our, on our Metro Bus side. We want to increase our part-time operator usage from about 1.6% to about 6%. This will give us a much more cost-effective way to meet some of those surges in demand on the Call-A-Ride side and those operator shortages due to last-minute call-offs and high absenteeism on the Metro Bus side. Now, on the maintenance side, hiring technicians, that continues to be our greatest challenge, especially those that work on our light rail vehicles. In that group, we're short 16 LRV mechanics. We have four in class currently. And overall, we're short approximately 42 maintenance technician. That includes bus mechanics, shop mechanics, electricians, fare box mechanics, facilities mechanics. That continues to be our, our challenging area. Now, in order to address this shortage, we're partnering with St. Louis Community College to develop a mechanic apprenticeship program so that we can take someone with no mechanical skills, train them and hire them from that program. We're also considering hiring candidates as young as 18 straight from trade school program where they learn the basic mechanical skills which will allow them to meet our current minimum qualifications for a first level mechanic position. Now, on the service side, currently providing approximately 70% of our pre-pandemic service. We're averaging about 1.6 million passenger trips per month, which is the highest level since 2020. And I'm going to give some kudos to the, the secure platform project. Most of those increases are at locations where those gates are in place. We're currently working on developing our master service plan. This will require us to do some very comprehensive data analysis of our existing service and it will require us to do some very robust community engagement to get feedback from our customers. Currently, members of my leadership team and I, we're outriding routes twice a week. We're talking to passengers and operators about route efficiency and reliability. We're also getting a better understanding of how efficiently we're providing service based on our own experiences we're out there. To date, we've compiled over 100 passenger comments regarding their ride experience. We're turning those comments into action items and implementing when possible. We're also working on a number of strategic initiatives. Some of those are, we're going through a strategic planning process for Metro Transit which will identify our goals as a public transit provider while also ensuring that we are supporting the strategic goals of the whole By State development. We're looking at enhancing bus stops with benches and bus shelters. We're evaluating data to identify where increases in bus frequency and expanding bus coverage makes sense. When we're out there riding and talking to customers, surprisingly, the majority of them feel like our service is, is adequate. Surprising number of them feel like our service is safe. And the, the, the one thing we hear the most is that we need to provide more frequency. Right? That's very impactful to the customer ride experience. If they miss a bus, sometimes they have to wait 40 minutes for the next bus, right? Another one of our initiatives is we want to make sure we're implementing our micro transit efficiently. Want to make sure that we are focusing our micro transit on the first and last mile as well as those high-trip generators, malls and Walmarts and, uh, uh, community centers and things like that. We're deeply engaged in improving our process of maintaining our bridges, tunnels and structures in a high state of good repair. We're planning workforce engagement activities to increase workplace satisfaction and employee morale. We are developing a, a monthly event we're calling Great Day in Transit where on a select day each month, transit leadership will get out into the system, will be interacting with passengers, will be providing updates on service changes, will be thanking them for riding, passing out swag, et cetera. We want to make sure that our passengers are seeing the faces behind the operation of Metro Transit. We're also developing an, an operations safety action plan and the focus would be on increasing collaboration with our public safety partners to review safety-related data and to share recommendations to address concerns. Also, part of our operations safety action plan would be to ensure that we have a very comprehensive and effective de-escalation program for our frontline workforce. We want to make sure that we're developing our mentors as peer supporters and our leadership to support frontline workforce mental health resilience. We're also, you know, looking at designing safety into our vehicles. So we're looking at some fully enclosed operative barriers. Now, we accept that we need to work on changing the perception and in some cases, the reality of, of the Metro Transit leadership team. So we are working with our organizational development partners and HR to develop a formalized leadership development academy. The goal is to not only develop our leadership skills, specifically those soft skills that all leadership possess, but also we need to develop the succeeding generation of Metro Transit leadership. We're studying how we are currently organized to see if we're structured in a way that allows us to be the most successful. We've identified some areas where we need to trim down. And then finally, we're meeting with our labor partners on a monthly basis to discuss and resolve all types of labor issues. We had a meeting this week. It was, it was really productive. I think we got some resolution to some things. And we're setting the groundwork and doing some relationship building prior to re-engaging in contract negotiations that we're planning to start again in the next couple of months. All right, that's it for me. At this point, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Sounds good. You've been very busy.
Very busy. Thank, thank you for recognizing that.
Well, it, it's clear. Are there any questions from the Commissioners?
No questions, just a comment. I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Forrest at the job fair last month in East St. Louis and it was a, a pleasure to see him out there, meeting folks and taking part of that. So I want to thank him for that.
Thank you for being there also.
I'd like to add a thank you too for the fact that you've been, you've been riding. You've been, you're trying to hit all of the routes. So that's good too.
Best way to learn the service and our customers.
Is to experience it. You're absolutely correct. Is to experience it. So thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? Back to you, Mr. Roach. Do you have a report?
I do not. I stayed on that first report and I thought that's good enough this morning. Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you. Item 10, call for dates for future meetings. Ms. Bennett, would you give us a summary on the upcoming board and committee meeting dates, please?
Yes, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, September 19th. The next Safety and Security Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, October 2nd. And the next Audit, Finance and Administration Committee, as well as Operation Committee meeting, will be held on Thursday, October 16th, all beginning at 8:30 a.m.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, according to my sheet, there is no need for an executive session. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Nothing has changed. Okay. In that case, you know what's coming.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Is there a second? Thank you all so much. I appreciate your time today. Have a great balance of your week and look forward to the weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.